Welcome to our, I would hope, last budget meeting. Our fifth and final budget meeting. The clerk will call the meeting to order and we'll get going. Before we do, I'd just like to acknowledge and thank all of our media partners who are either reporting on or broadcasting tonight's event, tonight's meeting. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, members of council. Under Agenda Item 1, approved agenda is presented. A motion by Councilor Shoemaker and Nero. Resolve that the agenda for the 2016-0322 budget meeting as presented be approved?
All in favor. Carried.
Under Agenda Item 2, minutes of the previous budget meetings. A motion by Councilor Shoemaker and Turco. Resolve that the minutes of the budget meetings for 2016-0229, 0301, 0307, and 0308 be approved.
All in favor. Carried.
Under Agenda Item 3, declarations of pecuniary interest.
Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we're discussing any items pertaining to Police Services Board, I will declare a pecuniary interest at that time. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Counselor Bruni.
Need discussion with EDC, I have to declare conflict.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, we can move on to the consent agenda. Counsel, what I thought we would do is just take each item one by one. So we'll start at 4.1. If anybody has any questions about 4.1, we'll direct the questions to the appropriate person. And once we're exhausted 4.1, we'll move on to 4.2. So 4.1 was a report summarizing the requested reports that we've had throughout the budget process. Do we have any questions about that report? Seeing none, we can move on to 4.2. 4.2 is a report on the impact of freezing non-union wages. This was a result of a motion by Counselors Christian and Shoemaker. Do we have any questions on that report? Counselor Shoemaker?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the Commissioner of Human Resources. If we wanted to implement such a freeze, I understand the time has probably passed for the 2016 year, but when would we have to implement it by for the 2017 year to be sort of in time next year?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker. The figure I quoted in my report, Counselor Shoemaker, is withholding the February 2017 grid increase. So provided we have that before that pay period, that would be plenty of time.
Okay. Is that sufficient?
Yeah.
Anything else for Commissioner Nero? So go to Counselor Hollingsworth.
Through you, Mayor, Commissioner Nero. I should have asked this question earlier, but basically, if you don't have the answer now, that's fine, but are our wages, non-union wages, in general, in line with other Northern Ontario cities, like Thunder Bay, Sudbury, and so forth?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth. You're probably not going to like the answer, but no. Our bylaw requires a five-year review of our salaries, and the last one was completed in 2007 and found that we lacked competitiveness at that time. There was a slight adjustment done in late 2007, but by all accounts, we've fallen behind once again.
Okay, thank you.
Have you not done the review then in 2012? I mean, it's a five-year review, so we're eight years, nine years out from 2007.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The administration at the time declined to go there in 2012, so that's correct.
So we have Counselor Christian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My apologies. Question through you to Commissioner Nero, and I apologize, I'm waiting for my system to come up here, so I don't have the specifics, but I think I can frame a relative question. Mr. Nero, in your report, you said that if we implement a freeze, that we'd be looking at $180,000 savings for year 2017. Is that correct? That $180,000, does that include maintaining the pay equity provision in the point that you raised earlier in the document? And does it also keep the movement within the grids in place as well? Because you make mention that we'd probably, or we'd have to be considerate of those. So that $180,000 represents those two provisions being left in the 2017 budget.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Christian. Yes. What I wanted Counsel to be aware of was that a repeal of the entire bylaw would put us in jeopardy with pay equity. You can certainly repeal a portion, provided legal and clerks agree. I'm not the expert in that area, but I believe you can.
Right.
But my concern was if you repeal the entire bylaw, we no longer have a job evaluation pay equity system, which would put us in violation of the Act.
Okay.
The freezing of the wage grid would still, based on how our offers are made contractually, would still allow for stepped increase within the grid, but the overall grid would not change. It would be the 2016 grid as we know it today.
For the purposes of just understanding it, because none of us are experts at this like you are, could we, is it feasible within each grid to pay grid, to freeze those people as well who are not at the top of their grid? And if we tried to do it, what would be the implications?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Christian. The way our offers are structured, in essence, it would be paramount to constructive dismissal because we do state in our offers the stepped increases that come along with the grid.
And I wanted to get that out. I had a feeling that that was sort of the essence of it, that you're violating the terms of the agreement, and therefore we're going into a pile of trouble with that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Picking up on Counselor Christian's questions, so we have the stepped increases, which are, I think, more significant than the percentage increases that are determined. But in any event, let's just forget the percentage increases. On the stepped increases, are they related to any key performance indicators, or is it just annually you get the increase?
To you, Mr. Mayor. There's no specific performance management tool we have in place existing, but the practice has been, on the basis of satisfactory performance, you progress through the grid.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else on that item? Ross, Counselor Mano, go ahead.
Thank you. Perhaps through you to our Legal Department, Ms. Borwitz-Simnick. With respect to the comment just made by our HR Commissioner, I have a little bit of a question as to whether or not that would cause a concern with respect to constructive dismissal. Would we be perhaps able to get a legal opinion with respect to that?
I've got it.
That very issue?
You speak to that, please.
I mean, I'm not sure if I, I guess it's a toss-up between legal and Commissioner Nero. Now, obviously, I respect your position.
Mr. Mayor, through to Counselor Mano. To verify my opinion, I actually did seek an opinion from our Labor Lawyer Council. And he agreed.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, anybody else on 4.2? Seeing none, we'll move to 4.3. Sorry, Counselor Fatah, go ahead. Apologize.
No problem. No. I think when we're making reference to other municipalities, it should be noted as one example that should be brought forward, I think, is the fact that the average house in Sioux-St. Marie is valued at $175,000. The average house in Sudbury-North Bay, Thunder Bay, is certainly above $200,000. So I think when we get into this notion of comparing northern cities, I think we should be aware that the cost of living in Sioux-St. Marie is certainly a lot less than it would be in those other cities. So my question, I guess, I'm sure it's been answered, but I'm going to ask it. Counsel was able to make the adjustment for 2016 in terms of freezing wages. Why can we not do the same thing for non-union staff?
Counselor Fatah, because we did that to our own wages.
Yeah.
So we got our own permission to do that. We would need the permission of the non-union staff to adjust their wages back.
So are we basically stating here?
We can't unilaterally change someone's wage. We can unilaterally change our own wage. So that's the difference, that's the difference.
So my next question is a follow-up again. In terms of dealing with this exercise, are we here today going to vote for this to take place in 2017?
No.
It's just strictly going to be for information.
And if you'd like to bring a motion at the next meeting, or the meeting after that, or the meeting after that for the 2017 budget, you're welcome to do that, and a motion will be heard and argued, provided you have a second, or...
So the onus is going to be on two counselors to bring this forward, and if nobody brings it forward, it's just going to fall by the wayside, correct?
Like any other matter that comes before us, the onus is on two counselors to bring it forward.
Okay.
Anybody else on 4.2? Seeing none, we'll move to 4.3. There's a report from the Clerks Department, Budget Information. Any questions on that report? Counselor Shoemaker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I understand this report recommends that the policy for retirement receptions be reviewed. I'd be happy to move such a direction. I think it's probably overdue, even the Clerks Department recommends that that take place. So if they want formal direction in that regard, I'm happy to move such a motion.
Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, through you to Counselor Shoemaker. It's the intent of staff that a number of our policies, not just retirement, but a number of our human resource-related policies, will be reviewed in the coming year. And I think you'll see the formal mechanism for that arise through the strategic planning process that we'll be conducting in April.
Okay, thank you. We had Counselor Christian on that same topic.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to hold off on my question, I think, for the purposes of expediency. It doesn't relate specifically to the budget. I think I'll wait.
Okay, great. Moving on to 4.4, Sioux-St. Marie Public Library. We have that budget in front of us, and some information that was requested. Are there any questions on that item? Counselor Fatah?
I'm going to make reference to an earlier resolution that myself and Counselor Shoemaker brought forward, and that is to bring forward a request that this council asks for a reduction in the 2016 budget of 5%. Now, does that have to be done in the form of a resolution?
Yeah. To clarify your motion, is it relating to the library budget specifically?
Yes.
Then it would be the appropriate, I think it would be the appropriate time to move that, would you think, Mr. Clerk? Are we just receiving this for information and move it later on? I'll defer to the clerks' opinion in this respect.
Through you, or to you, Mr. Mayor, I think probably later on, if, once we're dealing with the operating budget, or the report for...
Sure, go ahead.
The library's a levy board, is it not? Are we able to do that?
I think you're able to make a request. You're not able to actually reduce that budget.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So Counselor Fatah, we're going to take the motions when we get into the budget proper. So you will be given a chance to put that motion forward. Okay? Counselor Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This doesn't relate specifically to the budget, however, I do think it, as a counselor in Ward 1, looking at the numbers for the Churchill Plaza branch, we could see the volume of activity and related costs are very positive compared to the core branch, and I just want people to keep that in mind for future consideration.
Understood. Counselor Fatah?
On that basis, I'm going to make a comment here, because it's been brought forward already to our attention, that the library board is seriously considering moving from that location. So we're talking about a mute point here when Counselor...
That's going to be on our agenda on April, is it April 11th? April 11th. So we're going to reserve all discussion to that until April 11th. Counselor Hollingsworth?
My question's been answered.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Moving on to 4.5, long-term debt to reduce capital allocation. There's a report on the agenda that it resulted, I think, from a motion that was moved by Counselor Nero. Are there any questions on this report? Counselor Nero?
Mr. Mayor, not really a question, just, I'd like to continue to talk about this one a little for a bit here because...
Sure.
I don't think the intent was to directly remove capital works, per se, from a current budget and put them into a debt financing situation. The intent was more to look at the amount of money that we have in our current budget for some things like asset management, which I think is $2. something million. Take an asset management plan, if we want to be aggressive with that, that's where the debt financing would be. One-time items, like staff has been telling us for years. Take one-time items, roofs, facades on buildings, whatever we need to repair. We have money in the budget that's already financing that. If we do debt financing on those items, that frees up that money out of the current budget to replace the surplus that we put in last year, does it not? That's what I can get clear.
Well, we'll have the Commissioner of Finance speak to that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Nero. You'll see as a presentation that Jake Bruzes, our manager of capital assets and audits, is going to be doing later on, we do present an accelerated asset management plan, which will bring forward some of those projects, but it's not going to free up additional monies that can reduce the amount that we're allocating from the asset management plan. If you recall, when we presented the asset management plan, we were actually in an infrastructure deficit position, which means we don't have enough money to fund everything. And even going forward, we're going to have to borrow to do some of the projects that are identified in there. So there's not really a savings as such to be able to take that money, borrow, and reduce what's in the operating budget for 2016 for asset management.
Thank you. And I saw some of that in the report that we had, and I think I see more of it in the addendum tonight, where we see our outstanding debt in 2018. When we look at that bar graph, it spikes way up to $13 million. I'm assuming that's the $7 million for the Civic Center glass replacement that's in the report, that we need to finance at that time. And I understand that. I understand that we don't have the financing for the $20-some million. But what I'm looking at is just a smoothing effect for one to two years. I'm not looking for an ongoing financing in debt of these kind of projects. I'm trying to make up the $2 million from last year. That's all I'm trying to do. And I'm trying to smooth that out so that we pay it over and just put it into another financing group, call it what you may. We're already financing that $2 million. We put it in there, right?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Nero. The money that's in there each year, we forecast over 10 years. So that whole $2.2 million each year that's allocated, we require that along with the capital borrowing in order to maintain our asset management plan. So if we take $2.2 million out this year, we're going to have to take some capital assets that we need to replace off of our plan. There's no extra money in that allocation.
And Counselor Nero, I think if you borrow to smooth, call it smooth, if you borrow to reduce the levy, really, which is ultimately what we're talking about...
That's not what I'm saying. I don't think I'm getting across. We have $2 million in our budget.
$2.2.
$2.2 million in our budget for asset management, correct?
Understood.
Okay. If we debt finance $2.2 million worth of work, does that not free up the $2.2 million that we already have allocated in our budget?
Well, then, so what you're doing is you're applying that to the levy. So the levy comes down.
Correct.
So you still have that hole, which is what you're trying to rectify. You don't fix the hole.
But you smoothed it out. You need to make it up. We just don't have to make it up in all in one year.
All you do is you're moving the increase to future years.
Correct.
Which is what you did in 2014, when you didn't raise the taxes in 2014. That's the hole we're dealing with. So if we borrow, like you're just going to pass the hole on. So to smooth it out, it should be incrementally increasing to, now, to smooth the hole out. Otherwise...
Or you pay for it incrementally over time.
Yeah. But what you're ultimately, although I understand where you're going, what you're ultimately talking about is borrowing to reduce the levy. If you're borrowing to use the $2, if you take the, borrow the $2.2 to put it towards the asset management plan, and you just don't collect that $2.2 that we already have allocated for asset management, you're borrowing to reduce the levy.
At the end of the day...
Which is what staff is saying.
It's just a way...
That's what staff is saying, is that's just a bad habit to get into.
And I understand that, but it's not an ongoing practice that I'm saying to shut up.
Yeah. Counselor Christian?
I understand Counselor Nero's position on this. Just, I'm not an accountant, and I don't understand the nuances and all of the terminology, but I try to simplify it, and I see that if you read the Standard and Poor's report, our city has a very low debt ratio and debt servicing ratio. That's an opportunity. We have a community out there that is hurting right now in terms of what they're able to pay for, and we can't lose sight of the fact. We can't be that clinical and say, well, you know, we can't incur debt because it's not a good accounting practice, et cetera. I get all that, but this isn't that simple. This is a balancing act, and smoothing out is good terminology. I'm not thrilled about thinking about borrowing money to do this sort of thing. It'd be nice if we could pay, but it's a real challenge, and it's hard for me to tell a constituent that their taxes are going up again in a year where we're cutting services. So I understand that it's a bad habit to get into. The fact of the matter is, if some entrepreneurs want to step forward and invest in the city and increase our tax base, that would be tremendous. We don't have that option right now. We've got to try to keep the levy low. So we've got room in our debt portfolio to do something. It seems like we're missing an opportunity here. I'm not saying it's good practice, but this is where we're at right now. We have to give this serious consideration.
So we have Counselor Mano, and then Counselor Myers.
I appreciate the efforts, and I shared a lot of the same thoughts as my fellow counselor to my right, Counselor Nero. The difficulty is that we are being strongly encouraged by our staff for a reason that it's not wise practice to be using debt to reduce the levy. It's a practice that, as our mayor has just noted, happened in 2014. It's a practice, last year, we used our surplus to reduce our levy, and now this year, we're behind the eight ball again. I don't want to seem bleak in terms of the future, but if we do this today, we're just going to be faced with a bigger problem next year, where we're going to continually have to reduce services, which have already been reduced a great deal. We're already taxing our departments a great deal with respect to that, and we're going to turn around next year and say, where are we going to get money from? We're in a position, the road that we seem to be embarking upon, where we may be depleting all of our reserves to try to save our taxpayers this year. And while that is the priority right now, and in these budget sessions, is to get that number as low as possible, and under 2% in and around the rate of inflation, we can't be using debt to finance projects that are already in our capital budget. But as far as projects that we think of, for instance, and I don't want to harp on something I brought forward previously, but if we're going to move forward to LED lights inside of buildings, maybe that's a project we can look at using debt financing for, because there's a high rate of return. But I think we've got to look at projects that are one-time expenditures, and maybe, Commissioner, please help me with respect to that, Mr. Shaw. I think we're looking at one-time expenditures where the nature of the costs that we're going to finance, they're savings that we will reap in the future. To me, it would seem sensible that we would use financing for those types of projects, but not for any type of routine projects.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Romano. You've brought up some very valid points, and borrowing should really be used for large-scale assets with long lives, as you refer to one-time items. So if you're building, like when we built the S.R. Center, we borrowed for that long-term asset, you know, the typical time to pay it off is around 10 years, 15 years, lots of payback on it. But to use it to, because basically what we're suggesting right now is using it to reduce your levy. That's a, you're very correct in what you're saying. It's no different than using the surplus or the reserves. We're still going to be in the same hole. You can almost look at it like a payday loan. You're going to one of those cash stores and borrowing on your paycheck. It's not a good practice to follow, and it's going to be very, very difficult for counsel to get out of that hole if we go down that road, and I really caution against using it for that purpose.
Counselor Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I totally support the position of Commissioner of Finance, and what comes to my mind is, for those of us who were here in 2014, we had some unusual occurrences that year that took us to the zero, and one of them was that 1% in our levy was there because of the hospital, and that debt was satisfied and finished, had nothing more to it. So we were able to take out that 1% right off the bat. The Heritage Discovery Center was another projected to be $0.5 million that had to go into the levy, and in fact, it didn't in the end. We were able to bring that project in under budget, and we didn't have to put another half a percent. So there was 1.5% right there that we did not need to put in levy. 2014 had several things going on that year, and by God's grace, or whatever, in 2014, we didn't know where our community was going with S.R. We still don't know where our community is going with S.R. Quite frankly, I am scared to death to sit here this year and use every card in our deck. I hope I'm as wrong as wrong can be, that there's more pressing days to come, but there could be. And I don't think we are in a desperate position. I think we're in an excellent position. I agree with Counselor Christian. Our excellent credit rating is an opportunity, but I don't think it's an opportunity that we need to go to this year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So just to be clear, counsel, we don't have a motion in front of us to finance or use debt, and it seems like we're debating that. There's a report that's here from staff, and the purpose of this is to kind of ask staff questions relating to that report. If somebody wants to put forward a motion, then we can have that motion tabled, seconded, and debated, but, you know, there's, right now, I think we should kind of stop debating whether we're going to do something that actually isn't before us. So do we have any more questions from staff on this topic? Counselor Butland?
I hear loudly what you're saying, but I would hope that we would be able to debate anyway whether there is a specific resolution or not, because Counselor Nero's been on this for quite a while, and it's worthy of consideration, I think. And I was going to introduce, the next step is asset management, long-term debt, and the infrastructure program that's going to come out from the federal government, which is major. And I would like to be able to ask that question. When that comes out, and it's going to be for us momentarily, a whole lot of tens of millions of dollars. When that comes out, I take it Sioux-St. Marie is going to be involved. We always are. We couldn't say, especially at this point in time. So from where will that money come? Given our tremendous, yeah, it is tremendous, it's a great financial situation, I would think it's going to have to come out of the, we're going to have to long-term debenture any improvements that we make. And we need to be committing to that now, not four, five, six weeks when it's before us to say, okay, now we've got to scramble. So the asset management, I think we need to expedite and make that decision now as opposed to later. And now is the issue. We're in a critical stage. Talking to the construction association, said that would be great. We'd love a facilitated infrastructure program. Talking to Don Elliott from engineering, he said, if you're going to do anything, do it in buildings. And that's where multi-faceted trades groups are being involved. So I want to put that on the table. It's a long-winded to get to the point. It's a long-winded to get to the point. Number one, are we, probably best to you, Mr. Mayor, are we going to participate in the infrastructure program?
I think it was in November or December, I don't know when it was, but I, late last year, early this year, went to the Commissioner of Finance and the CEO, and I said, look, look at our asset management plan and figure out everything you could accelerate. Figure out everything you could accelerate, accelerate all of it, and let's borrow to do it, to put the money into the economy. And there's nothing stopping us from doing that. When the federal government comes out with its infrastructure funds, I agree, Counselor Butland, it's quite likely we're going to have to borrow to participate in that, because we don't have this big pool of cash ready to get in on the infrastructure funds, but we'll probably borrow so we can get in some projects and get some things moving. I think that's a bit different than the borrowing we're talking about right now.
Yeah, I agree.
Right? That would facilitate this budget, and I think it's all the more reason why I would be reticent to borrow to bring down the levy, because we're, I think, going to have to borrow in 2016 to get in on the asset management plan game and to actually invest in our infrastructure. There's likely going to be significant funds available through the federal government, and to answer your question, are we going to try and get as much of those funds as possible? Absolutely. At the same time, the Commissioner of Finance and the CEO are looking at what they can do in the current asset management plan, which might require some borrowing. If you want to have anything to add to that, you're welcome to.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, exactly that. We will be making sure that we're ready when those criteria come out from the infrastructure programs that are imminent to come from the federal government, and we will likely have to be issuing debt to be able to make our contribution share on whatever projects that we make application on, as soon that we get through in terms of the eligibility. I might also mention that 2016, we're not really going to be shovel-ready, so a lot of what we're talking about in terms of the infrastructure programs that will be undertaken through the federal infrastructure program probably won't be initiated until 2017 unless there's some real innovative things that are done to be able to get those projects accelerated. Usually what happens is an announcement, then there's an intake period that's announced that is undertaken to be able to review, so I would be surprised if we would have an opportunity to even make an application by September of 2016, which would put us into a 2017 position. As far as the report is concerned, the Commissioner's entirely right. Doing it just against the levy just would cause us to have that much more, or that much less capacity in terms of debt to be able to deal with the infrastructure programs, so we highly recommend against it. In the case of using reserves and using surplus, they're not at a premium rate. They're at $1. There's no interest rate applied to those. Doing it with debt, there's an interest rate applied to those, so you're actually accelerating the pressures on the tax levy by taking that step. So it's highly recommended against. My final comments would be, there are two reports that are before you this evening that we will be discussing on capital budget itself and on the asset management program that the mayor has alluded to earlier in terms of accelerating potential projects that we could debt finance that could cause some mini infrastructure stimulus within the municipality, and I would suggest that when those reports come forward, that would be where we could have that conversation about what projects would be appropriate on that theme.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
Well, I think we're in agreement here, and I do appreciate your comments. I just want to ensure, yeah, we may not be shovel-ready, but we're in a unique situation here compared to what every other community, and we go to the federal government and say, here are our priorities on the asset management to expedite them, and I think we have an asset management committee. Counselor Nero and I have a resolution, may not be necessary, but prioritize three or four or five items in buildings, Mr., I take Mr. Elliott's advice. The sooner we have that before us, the better. Not shovel-ready, but there are projects. Thank you very much.
Counselor Nero, I'm going to come back to you on this, because you had your hand up earlier and die.
I'm good, Mr. Mayor. I'm good with the discussion.
Anybody else on 4.5? Counselor Hollingsworth?
I just want, through you, Mayor, to our CAO, I just want to say I agree with what you're saying, because you don't know what the future holds, and it's my understanding that we, as a group, will be looking at the larger plan for the city, and we don't know what's going to come from that plan once we get our sleeves rolled up, and there could be some needs that will require funding. So I just want to say I agree with you and wait till we put a proper plan together for the city as we move forward.
Thank you. So going to 4, on the same one, Counselor Fadda? On 4.5, or just?
Well, it's sort of in line with this conversation. We are, if I may?
If it's in line with that topic?
Well, my question really, Mr. Mayor, is this, we're dealing with these items in isolation, okay? And we're saying, okay, now, we could move on this, but we're not sure if we are, and maybe we will. What is the end result of it? What, I mean, and we don't know the answer to that, but I mean, we're dealing with these issues in isolation, and we're trying to come up with some ways to bring down the eventual tax increase, okay? What I'm trying to understand here, Mr. Mayor, is I want to end up somewhere, personally speaking. I want to end up somewhere, and it's something less than what's currently being recommended. So what I'm trying to understand here is, as we just grab each one of these items one by one, we're not really sure where it's going to take us. In the end, I mean, we might end up with a 0% tax increase if we do get aggressive, or we may end up not moving hardly at all if we don't get aggressive. So by just jumping on each one of these, having a slight conversation, and then moving on, we don't really see the full picture.
Counselor Fadda, this is the consent agenda. These are just the matters that are here for information. We're going to have a fulsome discussion under 7, under .7, where you can move to amend the budget, you can move to do whatever you like under .7. So this is the consent agenda. There's a number of reports. If you have questions, you can ask it to staff. Then we're going to have a presentation from Mr. Bruzes on the capital budget, and we're going to go into our larger budget where you'll be able to talk about the whole thing and change it as you see fit. So anything on 4.6, Ontario Regulation 28409? Any questions on that matter? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 5 on the agenda. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, just first, we just need to vote on the consent agenda motion.
Oh, yeah, we need to vote. So all favor of the consent agenda? Carried.
Under Agenda Item 5, 2016 Operating Budget, Levy Boards, Local Boards, and Outside Agency Grants, a report of the Commissioner of Finance is attached for the consideration of council in a motion by Councillors Hoopan and Nero. Resolve that the report of the Commissioner of Finance and Treasurer concerning the 2016 Final Budget, Levy Board, Local Boards, and Outside Agency Grants be received, and that the amounts included in the 2016 Final Operating Budget as presented be approved.
Okay, so we'll have Counselor Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the Commissioner of Finance. Commissioner, the levy board increases, as shown in Appendix A, are 4.5% for Algoama Public Health, 5.7% for the Sioux-Saint Marie District Social Services Administration Board, and 44% for the Conservation Authority, correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker. That is correct. The dollar amount for the Conservation Authority is $145,140. Their total budget for 2016 is $475,065, as compared to Algoama Public Health, which is $2.4 million, and the DSAV is $17.3 million.
And, okay, thank you for that. And is there, I see in your report here that it says that a municipality may appeal the levy, this is specific to the Conservation Authority, appeal the levy to the Mining and Lands Commissioner appointed under the Ministry of Natural Resources Act. So if we disagreed with the Conservation Authority levy, we could appeal it.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker. There's very specific ways, there's only two ways that you can appeal that levy, and actually, I'm going to pass that to Legal, and they can detail that further for you.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, through to Counselor Shoemaker. This is under Section 27 of the Conservation Authorities Act, and essentially, there's only two grounds for the Commissioner to actually hear in respect of an appeal. Specifically, whether the levy actually complies with the section and how it was arrived at is the first. Does it comply with the manner in which it's required to be calculated under the regulations? That's the first, so basically, compliance with the calculation and with the section. The second is whether the levy is otherwise appropriate. So it's very, very limited. And also, just to give you some essence of how often this section is utilized, we've searched the website in terms of the reasoned and purported decisions that have been made towards the Commissioner in this respect. Over the past, since 1970, the decisions have been reported. Most of the decisions deal with issues related to the individuals that are either building, they were denied by the Conservation Authority, the ability to make, fill, or to move an item, things of that nature. Only in one instance in the history has a municipality brought forward an issue with respect to the levy pursuant to this section. That was done through the city of Kowarta in the year 2000, and there were four grounds of appeal, and that appeal was dismissed, so it's not very regularly utilized.
Okay. I suppose nevertheless, it says in the report that the appeal deadline has been surpassed, so we did not file an appeal within the allotted time. Is that correct, Commissioner, or Legal?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, through to Counselor Shoemaker. Yes, that is correct. The appeal was not submitted.
Who made the decision not to file the appeal?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker. This is the first year that the Conservation Authority was actually treated as a levy board. Previous administration treated them as a department, so there was never really a question as to appeal process or anything like that. So like I said, this is the first year that this has happened, and the appeal, we received the information back in November and was not aware of the 30-day time frame to appeal.
Are there any provisions within the Act allowing to request an extension for the appeal deadline?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker. There are no provisions for requesting extension. However, given the appeal, given the case law that we do have before us, as well as the matters for consideration at the hearing, I think it would be, would be the difficult situation to file an appeal, given the history here, as well as there's no indication here to show that the levy wasn't reached out in any way but to not comply with the regulations or anything. We don't have any evidence of that.
I appreciate that. I suppose every case turns on its own facts is the, you know, counterargument to that, and we're both lawyers, so we could argue this for days, but I won't make everyone suffer through that.
I won't let you argue it for days.
I just, I sort of wish this would have come to us, and we would be authorized either on appeal or not, but obviously, that...
I think Counselor Shoemaker, I think the point of it, I think staff recognized that this should have been brought to us, but it was the first time staff had dealt with the board this way, and by inadvertence, it wasn't brought to us. So I think staff, you know, in my conversations with them earlier today, took responsibility for that. I don't know if the CEO wants to speak to it now, but, you know, it wasn't, the long and short of it. We had Counselor Myers, and then Counselor Nero, then Counselor Bruni.
Was the CEO going to speak? No? Okay, we're good?
No, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I had sent you an email on this a few days ago, as did Counselor Shoemaker at the same time, and I did sit on this board for several years, a few years ago, and I'm curious to understand why we have a 44% increase in this, and I know that Manager Rhonda Bateman is in the gallery, so could we ask her to come to the podium and just let us know what has led us to this increase, apart from the fact that we weren't apprised of it in a fashion that we could have been?
Yeah. Welcome to Council, Ms. Bateman. So I think the question to you is, why is the Conservation Authority's budget going up 44% this year?
The 44% increase is due to a decrease in funding from other mechanisms, especially from the Ministry of the Environment. We all, this year, we had quite a decrease as well from the MOECC because of our source water implementation. The source water program is winding down. We do still have some budgeting from the MOECC, but it has been down quite a bit. And as a result of that, we actually went into reserve this year and took one-third of our reserves to a tune of $62,000. So that's...
I have a few questions on this, Mr. Mayor.
Just for the sake, MOECC is Ministry of Environment. CC stands for?
Climate change.
Climate change, okay.
Yep, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Rhonda, and welcome, Rhonda. Nice to see you. The, and I actually will have to do a sidebar here and say, as I said, I sat on that board for several years, and the staff are awesome, and you do a great job, so I know you won't take this personally. We're just probing to get some answers here. I would like to see, even though I realize it's after the fact, I'd like to see at some point what that whole financial breakdown is, if we can, just how that funding formula is today, your sources of funding, so that council gets a full understanding and that we can see clearly where the shortfall was. Further, I guess we have to ask you, it behooves us to ask you, is there any way that that can be brought down further, or is it legislated activities that are requiring this full amount of budget? Please, through you, Mr. Mayor.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers. The board determined that what we, what our goal was, was to maintain our current programs. Not all our programs are legislated, but many of the programs we actually act on don't cost us money except in kind and staff time, so to withdraw from any of the non-legislated or mandated programs would result in staff layoffs.
Okay. And through you again, Mr. Mayor, there's a share in this with Prince Township, is there as well?
Yes.
Yeah, could you please let us know what that percentage is? And when, maybe when you just bring that up?
Well, the percentage for Prince Township sounds really awful, because it's about 500%, but it went from $1,100 to $5,300.
Okay, so out of your total figure here, how much of that would be from Prince? Out of this $475,000, the $475 is just the Sioux-Saint Marie portion?
It's just Sioux-Saint Marie, yes.
Yeah, so what would the Prince portion be?
The Prince portion of our total budget is 0.67%, and Sioux-Saint Marie is 60% of our total.
Okay, okay, and then so, and you're going to give us maybe, just as a subsequent for information only, a breakdown of how the rest of that formula gets to 100%, or you can do it now if it's easy for you.
Well, we have other funders as well, including the Ministry of Natural Resources, Ministry of Environment and Climate Change. We have some self-generating revenue as well, and, yeah, a lot of odds and sods of self-generating.
That make up basically the other 30%.
Yes.
Okay, and my last question would be, and actually, it's not to you, Rhonda, so thank you for that. Through you, really, Mr. Mayor, and I don't know if it's to our Commissioner of Finance, but I would ask that we, it's a levy board, again, we've found out there's a process that we could have used that wasn't, isn't available to us, but I guess I'd like to follow the same way as Mr. Fadda is, is that we entertain a motion at council to ask that the Conservation Authority reduce their budget and advises accordingly if that's able to be done. So I think it is what it is for 2016, but I'm a little bit concerned about going forward, where we're going to be, so, you know, I'll park it for now. I think the message is open. Thank you.
Okay, so Counselor Nero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for Commissioner Shaw, if I may. Commissioner Shaw, Appendix C for outside agencies and grants.
Sorry, Counselor Nero, is it on the same topic?
Yeah, it's on...
Okay, so, sorry, but on the Conservation Authority?
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
Counselor, yeah, because I know Counselor Bruni wanted to speak in the Conservation Authority, and so, yeah, so Counselor Bruni, go ahead.
Thank you. Question to Mrs. Bateman. Compare our Conservation Authority to other conservations in Southern Ontario, a brief, like for revenue.
We, because of our location and our unique situation here in Sioux-Saint Marie, we are limited in the amount of revenue that we can generate. Places in Southern Ontario, for example, have their conservation areas are allocated green space, and they can actually charge gate fees. We can't do that here. People would just go down the road and enter from wherever they want. We're not going to start charging entries for Fort Creek or Hiawatha Highlands or anything. We're not going to start charging entries for Fort Creek or Hiawatha Highlands or anything like that. There's also, honestly, a bigger tax base that they draw on and are able to have greater self-generated revenues. We look for every avenue for self-generated revenues, and we'll continue to do so.
Thank you. If this 145,000 is not granted to you, I mean, it's...
It's already granted.
It's granted. Rhonda, what would happen with the Conservation Authority? Would the services be reduced? Would there be layoffs, et cetera?
Could I add something?
Sure.
Sure.
We have agreed when we were doing the budget, we agreed with the board that we would not have any, we have a staff wage freeze for 2016, there will be no increases to staff. And we also, we, just to let you guys know, that we do as much of the cap, any capital works that we need to do, we try and do as many in-house as possible to save money.
Anything else in the Conservation Authority, Counselor Bruny?
That's fine.
So, Counselor Shoemaker, you spoke into it, I'll come back to you after we've given Counselor Christian an opportunity to speak to it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Ms. Bateman. You had mentioned, Rhonda, that the ministry had cut your funding. Did they give you a rationale as to why? And were they, was the reduction aimed at any specific programs that they require you administer?
Yes. We, we knew it was coming over time, but what we've done with our staff capacity is integrated all our staff, so that all our staff can do all of the work, or, you know, two people have the, can do two or three different jobs, and that's how we've built our staff capacity. It is the Drinking Water Source Protection Program funding that's been decreased, and over the last six years, we've also lost two staff as well. So we did have a contingent of 10 staff, and now we have eight.
But what, what was the rationale for the cuts?
It's the actual implementation of the Source Protection Plan. We've done all our technical work, we've developed, the plan is now developed, and it's in the hands of the city. We're still, we still have an administrative aspect to that program that's funded to just over $150,000 this year.
Yeah, it's disappointing that the appeal window we missed. I think that's disappointing. Hopefully, staff will ensure that that doesn't ever happen again. Thank you.
Counselor Fata, you're next on this topic.
Yeah. You mentioned Sault Ste. Marie and Prince. Is anybody else involved in this, with the Conservation?
No.
Just the two, nothing from the Sioux Board?
No.
Okay. And you said that the percentage that is paid by Prince is point?
0.67%.
0.6%?
0.67% of our budget is from Prince.
Has that ever been reviewed?
I, yeah, that's why it went up, actually. The proportionment for budgeting for applicable funding from the city was, is apportioned by the Ministry of Natural Resources, and because of most of our major works being in Sault Ste. Marie, Sault Ste. Marie is apportioned 98.9%, and Prince is apportioned at 1.1%. So 1.1% of, of the applicable fees applied to Prince end up being 0.67% of our total budget.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Romano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Ms. Bateman. Hello again.
Hello.
With respect to the issues we're facing, Conservation Authority having to increase budgets, is there enough cash on hand? Or what is the situation with respect to cash on hand, money in the bank, kind of thing, to try to minimize potentially that concern?
As I said, we've reduced our reserve by one-third, so we have $125,000 in the bank.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, that's all.
So, Counselor Hollingsworth, then we're going to end with Counselor Shoemaker.
Thank you. Through Mayor, I'm not sure if this is to you, Rhonda, or, but, first question, when were we given the levy?
So when did the city receive the information?
Yes.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth. We received it the end of November, I think, is when you sent the letter.
Okay, thank you. And my other question, again, maybe this is through Mayor to our chief administrative officer. We received the budget for the library, we received the budget for police boards and so forth. Help me understand why we have not received a budget for conservator, or the Sioux Conservation and so forth.
I think the Commissioner of Finance can speak to that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth. For each of the levy boards, they're not required to submit a budget to you, you can request one, but in the legislation, they basically have to just tell you what the levy is, and in some cases, when it has to be paid.
Yeah, I think it's important to keep in mind, too, we exercise, the control that this council exercises over this levy board is, there are five people on this board, I think four of them are city councillors. So four of you sit on this levy board, so although we didn't all directly know about it, a third of the city councillors were aware of what was going on at the Conservation Authority. So in that sense, we do have, Counselor Bruny, it wasn't meant as a criticism, I'm, so, you're welcome to respond, but...
Thank you. We at the Conservation Authority asked if we can do a presentation here, and we were denied for a presentation earlier.
When was that?
I forget when, what month, but...
September, October?
But we were granted to go to Prince Township, and we did the presentation there. We wanted to give council a heads-up for what was going to be happening for our budget time, so we were refused to make a presentation, so I...
So a request was made to the General Review Committee to make a presentation to council? Because I have absolutely no recommendation of that, neither does the clerk.
It was asked to the clerk at SM, a senior management team meeting. It was...
I'll have to look back. It would be a chance to review the decision not... The councillors that are on the committee made an effort, and we were granted at Prince Township, and we did the presentation there, and we wanted to make a presentation here. And maybe a question to Rhonda. Rhonda, when did the Ministry of Natural Resources ever give us, give Conservation Authority an increase? When was the last time?
1996.
1996, they've been still operating with the same budget. Yeah.
Okay, so do we have anything new on, on this matter? Because this budget isn't being changed for 2016, we're past the appeal period. If somebody wants to make a request to the Conservation Authority for 2017, I think that can be made through our own city councillors who sit on the Conservation Authority, but I don't see any reason to kind of keep on going over this issue unless there's something new that has to be discussed. Does anybody else have anything on this that we haven't canvassed? Counselor Hollingsworth?
Just a general comment, something for all of us to consider as we move forward. I would like to discuss as a further date that we should consider asking for a presentation from the different levy boards, so we're not surprised again. It might be tedious, it might add extra time on our schedules, but I think it seems like most of us were surprised about this, and it seems like something happened where you want to do, to present, and it didn't happen. And so I think for consistency, I understand what Commissioner Shelley was saying, that we don't have to, but I think for our own education, for our own accountability, we should consider this. And if it was a list of maybe 100, different story, but when you look at, we hear about half of them already. So I just want to make that noted in the minutes, and that we possibly can readdress it at some future time.
Okay. Counselor Nero, we're back at you. You had another matter you wanted to discuss under this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Not the Conservation Authority?
We will, we'll move on, one?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Schell, back to Appendix C. We're not talking these outside agencies that are listed on this page, not a lot of money, but when you look at the reduction for the Peewee, 39%, maybe an explanation where, how do we come to that reduction?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Nero. That grant is actually for their property taxes, and when I looked at the budget this year, I noticed the actual amount that we are paying them was significantly less than what we budgeted for, so I reduced it to what the actual taxes were now.
Oh, so they're really not losing anything, because it was, it was a tax revenue, or neutral thing?
Correct.
Okay, good. That's all I have, thank you.
On that same schedule, Commissioner Schell, I sit on the Physician Recruitments Committee, and I'm almost positive that we reduced our budget for 2016, and that the city shares 80,000, not 100,000.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, or to you, Mr. Mayor, sorry. The information I had last was, there wasn't any change, I haven't received anything that there was a change to the budget.
I think there was a change, and we could get that to you, because all three parties have reduced their allocation, because there's a surplus that's going to be drawn on, so that's going to be decreased.
20,000?
Nope. On that same topic, Counselor Butland?
Yes, I'm glad you mentioned that. I didn't know it was reduced already. I said, I believe we're in much better shape.
We are.
Physician-wise in Sault Ste. Marie, and if the other groups are also reducing it, it makes it a lot easier. I have another question on the Appendix C, EDF budget. How much do we have unspent from past year or two? Commissioner Schell?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Butland.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry.
Sorry. The, I think we have 250,000 that is in total uncommitted at the end of 2015.
That's available to us.
That's available, and that's a whole, it's throughout all different years that's, hasn't been spent.
And we have an ongoing commitment to the, is it the lottery and gaming initiative?
Correct.
250,000 for three years.
250 a year, so that'll wipe out any residual monies we have, correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Butland. No, from your 500,000 allocation each year, 250 of that will be allocated to that. So that 250 is just kind of an ongoing surplus that's carried over, that can be used for other projects, and this happens all the time, because it just depends on the timing of the projects.
Okay. I know of a pending request, the next council meeting of 250,000. So I'm a bit concerned, given the economic situation, the environment here, if that leaves us with $250,000.
Yeah, for 2016, we have 500,000, we've spent 250 of it. If we approve another 250, it's spent for 2016. Then all we would have left over is the residual from previous years, which is 250.
250. I guess rhetorical question, are we going to leave ourselves short?
We'll have to determine that at the next meeting.
I'm sorry, at the next meeting?
Well, you're talking about a $250,000 ask that is going to come at another meeting. Will that leave us short? To me, that's a conversation for that meeting. Yeah. Anything else? Counselor Shoemaker?
On the same report, on a different matter.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. The Algoa Public Health levy, I know that there's some vacancies on the board from our part, from the city's part. I guess, were the vacancies there when the levy increase was set? Meaning, did the Sioux have any representation on the board when the levy was set?
Who was ours? Yeah, just the one appointment we had that wasn't Ian Fraser. And I can tell you, Counselor Shoemaker, that the clerk and I had been in touch with APH and had asked when we can make additional appointments to that board, and we've asked a number of times, and we were asked to hold off on that. And there was a consultant in there recently, who we met with, who I think is producing a report, and shortly after that report's produced, we'll be permitted to make our appointments again. But we've expressed some impatience with Algoa Public Health, because Sault Ste. Marie should have more than one representative on that board.
Well, that's good to know, but is it, can we just appoint them?
We could.
Yeah.
We could.
So, I guess, if our impatience runs too short, maybe we should do that, because it is a significant dollar value, I mean, not, not hugely significant, but it's, you know, 0.1 of a percent, dollar value increase.
You're welcome to, Claire. So the clerk and I have canvassed these issues, because we want to make those appointments, the clerk can explain further.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker. What we've been told by the province is that until they have a new process to have appointments made, that's one of the recommendations coming out of the report, that they will not permit appointments, and that includes provincial appointments to the board. The province hasn't made their appointments, and certainly, part of the province is as anxious as we are to have those appointments made. If we were to proceed and make appointments ourselves, I'm not sure they would be recognized or be allowed to participate as members on Algoa Public Health. That being said, the consulting group that the mayor and I met with are due to have another meeting with us, I think at the end of this month, March 31st, so we'll be interested to see what they've come up with and where we are in the timeline.
I'm confident we'll be making our appointments shortly.
Okay. That's, that's, that's good. It's sort of, you know, too bad we don't, we didn't really have too much of a voice in this setting of their levy increase.
I would agree with that, Counselor Shoemaker. Counselor Myers?
I was going to say that I'm not so sure how much impact we'd have on the levy, again. It's the thing, when you've been here nine years, I sat on that board for a number of years as well, and it's pretty laid out, and I don't know that there's an appeal process even with Algoa Public Health the way there is with Conservation. So, I would, I mean, yes, we need to get back to that table and be there, but I'm not sure we would have had much impact, just on the levy.
Just a comment.
Anything else on Algoa Public Health? Seeing none? Yes, Counselor Fata, on Algoa Public Health?
Just to err on the side of caution, I just want to make sure that this exercise is not finalizing anything.
So, Counselor Fata, before we moved on to the next agenda item, I was going to ask you if your motion related to any of the bodies that are identified in this report. If it does, we'll take your motion now, because this report would essentially approve these allocations.
Well...
So, but I was going to come to you once we had exhausted all the questions on it. Okay, so we'll go Counselor Turkle, then we'll come to you, Counselor Fata. Counselor Turkle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, we'll finish up that Appendix A and go to the Sault Ste. Marie District Social Services Board, and we have the Commissioner with us, Mike Naddow. And I know the answer, because I think you explained to the rest of the board members, there's six of us, I don't know if we were all there. You were absent, Counselor Myers. Yes, but there's an increase of 925,000, almost a million dollars. Correct, Mr. Naddow, for the, our portion, the city's portion of Sault Ste. Marie, to the DSAB?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Turkle. Correct.
So all three of them, Mr. Mayor, have an increase, and I think they're all important for the well-being of our community, no doubt about it, but you explain to us why there's an increase this year?
Sure. Well, unfortunately, between 2014 and 2015, Ontario Works' caseloads rose 11%. They're up another 3.5% this year. We're projecting them to be up 20% over the two-year period, which, Ontario Works, so this counsel knows, is a claims-based program. We legally have to determine eligibility within four business days when someone makes contact, so we can't defer that service to try to mitigate the budget. Also, due to economic conditions, people are, there's less earned income in the community, and Sault Ste. Marie Housing provides subsidy of, up to 70% towards the rent for people in housing. So someone makes $1,000, they would pay 30% of that net income towards the rent. The DSAB subsidizes up to the market. As people have lesser income, that 30% produces a head of the cost, the housing units that we have processes. So the social services experience an ultimately 2%. The full reserve, 130,000... ...ultimately, 2.5. The full reserve, $135,000, excess $200,000, is to reduce the impact to our capital account, and we accessed another $112,000 provincial administration program to, to impact the levy. I would like to remind council, the EMS portion of the DSAB...